All right. Good evening, folks. This time we'll call the Tuesday, February the 19th, 2003, meeting of the Ardell County Board of Commissioners to order, and we'll have our invocation. Join us, please. Father, we come to you again thanking you for the opportunity to serve you and serve our fellow citizens. We pray for the wisdom necessary to do that. We pray that those who come to force will give the information we need to govern successfully in a way that will benefit those we serve. And we pray tonight for all of our armed forces around the world, wherever they may be, that your hand would be upon them and you'd keep them from harm. For those who've been wounded, that you would heal them. And for those families who've suffered the greatest loss, we pray that you would comfort them. And we ask these things in the name of our Savior. Amen. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of our Country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments of this agenda coming from the staff this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I have one adjustment. I'd like to remove item F under Administrative Matters.
Okay, so deletion. All right, sir. That's all you have?
Yes, sir.
Under Unfinished Business, Commissioner Griffith has a few comments for us this evening. It's related to our retreat, so I'm gonna make sure I mention that so I won't go by it. Are there any adjustments coming from any members of the board this evening? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion to adopt this agenda as amended.
So moved.
Have a motion from Ms. Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This evening, we are privileged to have with us Mr. Ben Garrison, who's worked for the county for a number of years directly and with other agencies and has served our community and all the citizens of this county very well, and we want to recognize him this evening. Mr. Garrison, if you'd come forward, please, sir. You can bring your lovely bride with you if you'd like. I'd like to make mention of something that has certainly brought sadness to my heart, and that was the passing of Mr. Bill Benfield of Mooresville, who passed away last Wednesday. We seldom do these things in these proceedings, but Mr. Benfield truly was a public servant. He served on the Ardell County Board of Education for 16 years. He was a founding member of the Ardell County Recreation Department Advisory Board, and he was a member of that board for 36 years and 10 months. He was one of the founding fathers of Shepherd's Fire Department. He served this community both professionally and as a private citizen in many capacities over the years. There are actually too many to report, but I was definitely saddened to hear that, and he'll be missed by this county, and I just ask you folks to keep his family in your prayers this evening. We have no appointments before the board that I'm aware of this evening. That brings us to public hearings, and this is a continuation of a public hearing. Is that right, Mr. Todd?
Right.
Okay. We'll turn it over to you, and this is in regard to the request from Origin Food Group and Westside Real Estate LLC to amend a site plan for a light industrial conditional zoning district located 306 Stamy Farm Road, State'sville, North Carolina, 13.35 acres. Okay, Mr. Todd?
Good evening. As Chairman Johnson stated, this is the property that y'all have become familiar with over the last few months. The Origin Food Group, along with the owners, have been working to fix some concerns that were brought to light through this request. That has to do with the gully to the rear of this property. Since our last meeting, Soil and Water Conservation, the local office has been involved, along with the Deaner office in Mooresville, in which an engineer has come in and developed a plan to hopefully prevent any further erosion in that gully. You can see in your packets that you were mailed, there's a letter from the engineer and also a grade stabilization proposal for that ditch. Without reading the document, this map may not make the most sense, but the plan consists basically of them to go in, knock the banks or the shoulders of that gully down to a three-to-one slope, stabilize it, seed it, and then come in from the existing outlet, install plunge pools, assert every certain linear footage, and then basically empty the runoff into the very bottom of that gully. So they're not filling in the gully, but they're knocking the banks down, hopefully release the water at a slower rate at the bottom of that gully to send it down the natural drainage and prevent any further erosion on the site. And again, we have Don Greenly with Origin Foods here, who I think would like to speak in regards to this matter.
Before he comes forward, Mr. Todd, are you satisfied with the present status of these plans, that it's discernible by you and is a plan that you would be able to enforce? You have sufficient understanding of that, you believe?
Yes, staff does. We feel very comfortable with what's been proposed. In the coming weeks, they're gonna be fine-tuning the plan a bit to get more specific with it, but the plan is how it's proposed, and we feel it can be enforced moving forward and should alleviate the concerns and problems that are in place now.
Okay. Thanks, sir. If you would like to speak now, sir, we'll let you come forward. Didn't mean to detain you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the board. Apologize for the time that it has taken to develop the plan that would be acceptable and correct some of the issues, but there has been several agencies that have been involved, as well as some private contractor work in this. Also like to thank the Planning Department and Matthew Todd in particular for all their guidance and direction in preparing documents and guidance as well. And I'd need to also mention that the Soil and Water Conservation has been involved, and it's their effort and design, and they will be continued to be involved in overseeing and further developing the plan to eliminate this situation here. It's as included in your documentation, there is a letter from Cindy Safrat, the engineer with Soil and Water, that states in her professional opinion that the stormwater control and erosion is best addressed as proposed plan that we have here. We did look at several other options. One was collecting stormwater on the site, but there are some issues with the health regulations, pasteurized milk ordinance, and having standing water for any time on processing property. Excuse me. We also looked at the possibility of burying tank systems that would be able to collect the water, the stormwater, but that became economically prohibitive. So as we have developed this plan, or I should say Soil and Water developed this plan, Mr. Stamy has met with Mr. Boone, and with this option and plan, it would alleviate his concerns about the right-of-way and access to the property that he owns that would have to go through our site at the present time. And Mr. Stamy also met with the Hineses, and they're in agreement with the plan as it has been played out so far. Now, we know that we still have a lot of work to do and are proceeding with it, with the soil and water, and developing the detailed plan, and again, they will be overseeing the construction work as this proceeds. So again, I thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
Yes, sir. We thank you for your cooperation. Mr. Todd, we've had the public comment segment pretty much on this public here. Are you aware of anyone else who wishes to address this before we hold a vote?
I'm not aware.
Okay. All right. Any discussion or a motion from the board this evening?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All right. A motion to approve this sonoring request with the erosion control plan incorporated into it, I take that, Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to Administrative Matters. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, first request, which is item A, is a request for approval of Budget Amendment Number 22 to transfer funds within the Cooperative Extension Services budget, and Susan Blumstein will make that request.
Thank you. Nancy Keith had asked me to present this for her tonight. She couldn't be here. NC State University has still not opened the position for the clerical staff member who resigned last summer from cooperative extension. As you know, those positions are funded 50% by the county and 50% by NC State University. With the other vacancy she has in the department, she needs to extend this part-time employment using the county's share of funds until June 30th, 2013. There's no immediate plan for the university to fill the clerical position, and it's probably fairly low on their priority list with the number of openings that they have statewide. So we'd ask if the board would approve Budget Amendment Number 22 to transfer some of the county's share of the funding from contracted services to part-time salaries.
Any questions, Ms. Blumstein? How does the amount of the part-time salary compare to what our 50% share of a regular salary would be?
It's less than.
Less than?
Yes, sir. There are no, just, there are no benefits other than the FICA, county share of FICA.
Okay, any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment 22.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 22 from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item B is a request for approval of Budget Amendment Number 23 for reimbursement to Cool Springs Volunteer Fire Department. I believe Frank Phillips from our tax board is gonna make the presentation, but I'd like to recognize some folks out in the audience. Ken Seacrest, Steve Mays, Andy Webster, and I see Lynn Niblock sitting next to them, so Lynn as well from the Cool Springs Fire Department.
Yes, I'm Frank Phillips, with the Ardell County Fire Tax Board, and we're here to request a transfer of funds from our unused reserve of $51,000 this year and $51,000 to go into the next budget year for $102,000 total. This is to purchase 11 acres of land up here at Cool Springs Number Two Fire Department. They have already purchased this property, and we are looking to reimburse them.
Okay.
It is their future hope to build an additional station on this property. They already have a small Number Two station there, but it would become their main station in the future.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Phillips, or Mr. Mays, or Webster? Just one question, Mr. Phillips. I discussed with you a while ago. There have been some concern about the fund balance in the fire tax district fund, so maybe you could address that.
Well, we currently have about $900,000 in our unused fund carryforward balance from prior year, and we would transfer
$50,000?
$51,000 out of that for this year, and we would also be using $51,000 out of it for next year.
What's the minimum balance that's recommended?
Generally speaking, it's 8%, as I understand it from Susan Blumstein.
$8% of the total, which would be in the equivalent of about $400,000. So we have a comfortable balance. Okay, we're well above that. Okay. That's what I was wanting to know. Okay. Any other questions? All right. If not, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 23, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion to approve this request comes from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Item number C is a, or item C is a request from Parks and Rec Department for permission to transfer $30,000 from the Parks, or from the Park, Recreation Park Fund to pave a parking lot out at Scott's Rosenwall. You're gonna, you're passing, what's being passed down now is a handout that is just a little bit of clarification on this request. In the memo, it says that the specific action requested is to transfer $30,000 from the Recreation Park Fund, which is correct, to the Parks and Recreation Budget. That actually needs to say the Scott's Rosenwall Park Fund. We are, we're dealing with two different funds here, and it would not go into the Parks and Rec General Fund budget. So just a point of clarification.
Good evening, Mr. Woody. I'm just studying this.
Good evening, and I was giving everyone a moment.
But this would, Mr. Woody, is it my understanding this would come out of what historically, and I apologize, it's been a while since I've been on that board, that would come out of what was historically the capital project fund for the county?
Correct.
The past, that was divided into four quadrants. Do you folks still do it that way?
That is the understanding at this time, yes.
Okay. Now, is this quadrant gonna borrow money out of here and pay it back?
This quadrant has never received money from the park fund. The property we're talking about was donated to the county in 2009, I believe, and we applied for a part-of-grant. The part-of-grant was based on the value of the donation, and so the improvements we are making to the property on what we received from the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant did not include, well, there was not enough value in the property to get enough money from the grant in order to cover paving for this property.
Okay. So what you're saying is these folks, the folks who live in that quadrant's been contributing to the county park fund, money that was accumulated, left out of your budget a number of years, but this is the first time they've actually received any money out of this?
This would be the first time, yes.
Well, we better not give them too hard a time over it. Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Woody? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, have a motion to appro, excuse me, to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Both of the next two, the two requests coming up, D and E, are from the Public Library, and I'm just gonna turn both of those over to Steve Messick, our library director.
Good evening. Both of the items I have this evening have to do with the E-Rate program. This is a program under the Federal Communications Commission that provides discounted telecommunications services to schools and libraries, and the library's been participating in this program since 2001. So these two items are related to each other. The first is a request to approve a 24-month contract with AT&amp;T for internet service for the Ardell County Library. That's for the main library here in Statesville. This internet connection is used for a number of purposes. It's what people, the public uses to access our catalog, to see what books we have and to reserve them. They also use it to see what items they have checked out and so forth. It's also what the branch library's used to connect to our computer system to check books in and out. It's also used for the public to access the internet from the public access computers we have in the library, and then it's also used for the staff to access the internet. The FCC has requirements for how we request these services. We're required to request proposals on the FCC website, and then different telecommunications companies respond. We received three responses for this service from AT&amp;T, EarthLink, and Time Warner Cable, and the lowest proposal was from AT&amp;T for a 24-month service with recurring annual charges of $12,816. And AT&amp;T is a service that we're currently using, and we've been very, very satisfied with their service, so I'm requesting that the board approve this contract, which would begin July the 1st with the beginning of the new fiscal year.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Messick?
Looks like this new contract is actually less than the current.
It's slightly less, yes, than the one we have had with AT&amp;T.
Every little bit helps.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The second item is a request to, for the library to, the board's approval for the library to apply for these E-Rate discounts. And you see the services outlined there that we would be eligible for with the different services listed, the annual cost. The E-Rate program covers 70% of the cost, so the E-Rate funding shows the amount that E-Rate would cover, and then the county funding is in the last column. That's how much the county would actually have to spend for these services. I made an error in writing this memo. The, if you go back to the previous memo, you saw that the AT&amp;T service was $12,816, and the memo I wrote, I have the AT&amp;T service as $13,152. That's actually what we've been paying, so it actually would be the $12,816 under the new contract. So as I said, these services are all, we would get discount services under this program, and these would all begin the 1st of July with the beginning of the new fiscal year.
Okay. Any questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item G is a request from Animal Services and Control for an exception to current financial accounting procedures, and Chris Royal is here to make that request.
I'm gonna turn it over to Rachel Johansson. She's the one that's been applying for the grants, and Susan Blumstein has, is standing behind us on this proposal here.
Good evening. I've come before you to ask to apply for grants given by PetSmart Charities, in the exception to the current accounting procedures. The reason being for that is there sometimes is an extremely small window for application prime, and unfortunately, we cannot always get before the board. We are not going to ask for anything that requires matching funds, and if we did get funding, we would come for a budget amendment.
Okay. Any questions?
What's the, do you know the typical amount that they award, an average amount?
It can be for different things. Sometimes it's just for supplies. If there's a big adoption event, we could be eligible to get just supplies for that, and that usually gives about a week's time. Sometimes they can go anywhere from $1,000 up to $10,000, depending upon what you're applying for. We just hate to lose, you know, $1,000 worth of adoption help just because we couldn't get in the window.
Okay, any other questions? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve this request from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item H is a request from the Finance Department for approval of a service extension agreement and the annual FY13 audit contract.
Thank you. It's time to go ahead and get our audit contract in place for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2013, and it's also time to extend a service agreement the board so chooses with Martin Starnes and Associates CPA. We've worked with Martin Starnes for several years, and when we bid this service at that point, we had two firms who submitted proposals to do our audit, and Martin Starnes was clearly by about $15,000 less expensive than the next firm. Governmental auditing is a specialty, and a lot of firms don't take the training because it's expensive to say, to stay qualified to do governmental audits. I've submitted, along with this request, a copy of their latest peer review. It's sort of intertwined. It was done in May of 2012 by Coontz, Wooton, and Haywood, and clearly, their peers believe that they are qualified and remain qualified. The fiscal year 13 fee is $41,000. We prepare our comprehensive annual financial report in the finance office, and the auditors put their opinion and their internal control opinions, as well as the financial opinion on our report. My request is that My request is that the service agreement be extended for a three-year period at a fee of $41,000 for fiscal year 13, $42,000 for fiscal year 14, and $42,500 for fiscal year 15. These rates are less than or equivalent to other like-size counties, and when I say like size, I looked at the total revenues. I would recommend the approval.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Blumenthal? Hearing none, all floors open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Boone. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item I is a request for approval of the January refunds and releases. These seem to be in order, and no county commissioners' names are on the reports.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And J is a request for approval of the February 5th, 2013 minutes.
Okay. Any corrections? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the minutes from Commissioner Boone. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. This evening, we have announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. The Animal Grievance Committee, we have one announcement. The Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, we have one announcement. Moving to appointments to board and commissions. The Troutman Planning Board, Extraterritorial Jurisdiction, we have one appointment this evening. The floor's open for nominations.
Move we appoint Steve Cash?
We have a nomination of Mr. Cash, Steve Cash, from Commissioner Boone, other than any other nominations. If not, I would move that we close the floor to nominations, appoint Mr. Steve Cash by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the Adult Care Community Advisory Committee. We have two appointments. The terms for Deborah L. Tillman and Judith Archer have expired, and they are eligible and willing to serve again.
Motion to appoint both.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations and appoint Ms. Tillman and Ms. Archer by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to unfinished business, I believe Ms. Griffith has.
At Saturday's retreat, Commissioner Boone asked that we look for ways for the staff to, if there's opportunities to save money, and he encouraged the county manager to put a plan into place that would reward county staff and employees for finding ways to save Locally, we had a business, and the Thorlo Sock Company. I heard Mr. Thronberg speak one afternoon, and he said that his employees rallied together, and they found $2 million in savings in their company. And he said, for them, that was the equivalent of producing $8 million more dollars in socks in order to generate that savings that his employees came up with. And in industry, your biggest asset is not your customers, it is your employees, because they make or break a business. And I just want to publicly support Mr. Boone's proposal that we find some way to reward employees of the county for finding processes that save money, finding, finding different ways to save money, that there is some type of compensation back to the department that the department can use as, as they see fit on training, bonuses, a portion of what the savings that is found. And I just want to publicly support Mr. Boone's suggestion and encourage the county to look for ways to do that. And in conversations with Mr. Smith, there are some counties around us that are, have some programs in place, so I would just like for us to explore that option, because I think it's a win-win situation. It's a win for the taxpayers, and it's a win for the employees of the county that work hard. And if we can find ways to cut costs and processes, I want to applaud the folks for doing that. So, I appreciate your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate Mr. Boone being forward-thinking on this matter. Thank you.
I appreciate your kind words, and maybe we can put our heads together and come up with something. As I stated Saturday, as things stand now, and as they stand in most government agencies, there's very little reward for an employee who does cut costs. There's just no financial incentive for doing so. And people, people are all human, respond to incentives. That's why I suggested. I appreciate that. Maybe we can put our heads together and do something.
I agree. I'll turn my attention back to Ms. Griffith again. Would you like to place that on the form of a motion that we just instruct the county manager to see what these other counties are doing, and just report it back to us? Maybe we can pick the best of it, or?
Yes, I would like to do that. And I just think that as we are moving forward, and the economy is still tight, and things are still stretched, that if we can be proactive in this, maybe we can lead an example for other counties in the state, and help us, just not as a region navigate through this, but help our state navigate through these hard economic times. And if any employees come up with things, I think they should be applauded and rewarded for their diligence and their hard work to save taxpayers' money. So, I would move that that go in the form of a motion that we direct Ron Smith to find other counties that have some programs and report back to us the findings, and let's move to put something in place for the next budget year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'll just add to that. There's no way we on this board can know every detail of how every department operates. There's no way we're capable of micromanaging every, every department, and the people who work with it every day can. They have a lot better insight into it, have a lot better idea. Now, things might be, might be changed to make them more efficient. One reason I suggested it. Okay. So, that's the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Griffith. I'm not aware of any more unfinished business. Public comment period. Matter of fact, did anybody sign up this evening?
No, sir, I don't believe so.
Any new business come to our attention? County managers report.
I don't really have anything to report, but I do want to thank you for what I felt was a very productive retreat. I think you gave me the direction that I was hoping for, and I think it's gonna help us out quite a bit in putting together this budget, so I thank you.
I did, yes, sir, thank you. I did fail to mention something earlier. Yesterday, in a discussion with Judge, Superior Court Judge Crosswhite, we had a discussion several minutes about overcrowding in the jail, and what could be done about it. He, in fact, they're having a meeting between the judges, I believe, our district attorney, Sarah Kirkman's there tonight. You may have observed the absence of Tracy Jackson this evening. I believe our county manager dispatched him to that meeting. Judge Crosswhite gave me every assurance that they could, they could get a minimum of 10 prisoners out of the courthouse on the average occupancy. So, I just told them to be about that. If they could, if they could do that, that would be, by my calculations, about $140,000 a year if we can move those people out of there. So, they're gonna come back with some recommendations and some changes in policies that he thinks will do that. Okay, I move now we go under closed session under Economic Development, General Statute 143, 318, 11A4. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
One action as a result of our closed session this evening, I would offer a motion to approve a new economic development incentive for NGK Ceramics USA Incorporated based on the following three stipulations. The economic development incentive is approved on December 18, 2007, September 2, 2008, April 7, 2009, November 9, 2010, and November 23, 2010, shall be superseded through the approval of a new incentive based on a different investment amount. Secondly, a contract will be drafted that is based on an NGK investment amount of $29,330,000 with the improvement period beginning January 1, 2008, and continuing through December 31, 2011. This contract must be executed within 180 days. Any discussion on that motion? If there are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. And with that, I move that we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.